Let's make sure you're. Everyone check to make sure you're, uh. How do we, um. How do we check the, I don't see a light on these.
Oh, I see.
Okay, are they? Okay.
Hello.
Yeah, all right, um.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear us? All right, I'm calling the Planning Commission meeting of July 2nd to order. Ms. King, John, will you call the roll, please? Here.
Here.
Can you hear us?
Here. Yeah, I can hear your call.
Here.
Mr. Bym?
Here.
Ms. Scherzel?
Scherzel? I'm here, thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Okay, and before we get to the minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion to change the order of the agenda to move number five, Old Business Kiowa next, to after be the zoning text amendment so that the two comprehensive plan items are together. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the, um, April, April 2nd? April, June?
June 4th.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 4th, 2025 session.
Wrong there, right there.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, and I know everybody sent some edits to Petraea. Any other corrections to the minutes that haven't been sent in? You're hesitating, Ms. Scherzel?
Oh, no, I have a question, but I'll follow up later.
Okay. Okay, all in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained, I wasn't here.
Right, thank you. All right, public comments on the agenda items? Anybody have a public comment?
Madam Chairman, my name is Mark Primar, 81 Dungannon Hall. The only thing I would sort of say and ask is my, my very, very few comments or questions are related to the comprehensive plan work. And I think it would be more appropriate if, given the opportunity, while you're discussing that, after you discuss it, before you might take a vote, I'd like to provide comments as opposed to now, in isolation.
That's fine, and who will you be representing when you make those comments? Are you representing the partners, the resort, or all of the above?
I'm representing the partners, the resort, and myself.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, Lance Spencer, 40 Sunlet Bend, but I'm speaking today as the Chair of the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee and a member of the Town Council. Hopefully, I'm not saying anything that's news at this point, and so I'll keep it brief, but I'll hit some high points. I know you're taking up the cell tower ordinance in this session today, and thank you for that. And I, first of all, I want to say thank you to a lot of people that have been involved about the last eight months working on this. Infrastructure Public Works Committee, Brad McElvein, Dave DiStefano, and Phil Mancusi Anguro. The subcommittee that you appointed, Madam Chairman, that's been working the last month. And thank you for allowing me to participate in some of that, to, to help guide it so that it is something that can look out for not only the controls the town wants to have in place, but also cultivate getting modern cellular coverage. And to the town staff, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Vincent, primarily, working on this. The cell tower coverage thing, as I believe you all know, starts with public safety. And I believe you probably all saw, Ikiwa is not scientific, but you saw Ikiwa comments this weekend where people were talking about lack of coverage and concerns about making emergency calls. We met last week with our partners from the, the tower company and the, the telcos, just kind of reiterate some things. And we met with key stakeholders from Keel Island, the ARB, Kika Resort, and others, just to, to understand any issues or concerns they might have, as well as, you know, provide awareness and understanding to them as to what we're about and where we're going with this. It was interesting, the Beach Patrol shared some anecdotes, and you may all be aware that last 4th of July, the congestion was so bad, the Beach Patrol wasn't getting text messages and phone calls, which is a real issue. And they also shared just, you know, and this is kind of a trivial example because there's some pretty more high-powered examples, but they said that when somebody refuses transport, if they're injured, they have to sign a de-hec tool that's online. In most places, they can't do that on Kiowa, because it's an online tool on their iPad, and they can't sign that. It gets more and more complex and complicated when you're talking about life support equipment and stuff going on between the ambulance and the hospital as they're transiting and things like that. So, public safety is a, a, a real key point with this. I think probably the other key point is just cellular broadband. We're a generation behind on Kiowa at most places with cellular technology and modernizing cellular technology, because everything from home applications to devices in your home to everything else use cellular. And to, to meet those bandwidth demands, we need to improve our infrastructure. Thank you to the, like I mentioned, the, the tower companies and the cellular providers who have been with us all along. Their presence, I think, helps speak volumes that they want to help improve Kiowa as well, and they've been with us throughout, keeping, keeping everything straight from their perspective and, and helping us understand what's needed from their perspective to provide the modern service we need from Kiowa. So, if you have questions for me later, I'm, I'll stay throughout, but thank you for a few minutes to talk.
Thank you. You have some comments? Mr. McElvein?
Brad McElvein, 146 Blue Herron Pond Road. As Councilman Spencer mentioned, I'm one of the members of the Infrastructure and Public Works Committee. This has been, I think, an exciting time, because the cell, cell coverage has been a problem that's been obviously ongoing for a long time. And I think a lot of people have wrung their hands and said, well, there wasn't much we could do. And when we met with the cell towers, cellular carriers and the cell tower, there is. And they've come forward with a plan that I think makes sense. It's, I think, if you look at the towers, we have a tower already that's over 165 feet tall, and I think most people on Kiowa would be hard-pressed to figure out where it actually is. I know when I pointed it out to some people, they didn't know that it actually was there. So I think that, you know, if you're looking at what is visually appropriate, I think that are trees, which are the, one of the problems with our cell coverage, also the things that hide the cell towers. But I do think, at the end of the day, as Councilman Spencer, this is a life safety issue. And it can't be because we don't like the way it looks. I mean, do you really want to go to somebody who's had a serious injury or had some health issue and say, "We could have fixed this, but we just didn't like the way it looked"? And I think that's the ultimate question that you've got to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see some familiar faces from some of the cell tower meetings I attended. If, for the benefit of the rest of the commission, would the four of you just mind identifying yourself and which company you're with? Thank you. I'm glad you're here, Kimberly, because I think we're going to have some questions for you. All right, we're going to go first to the item B, the zoning text amendment. AZ 025-000005 Communication Tower, request to amend section 12-103. Conditions of use to modify standards regarding communication tower infrastructure to enhance public safety and quality of life issues regarding cellular coverage. Can I have a motion, please, to move this, the amendment, the, motion to move the resolution?
I'm sure. Do you want me to repeat that whole thing, or just say?
No, just move.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and then we will have discussion. John and Jean are going to take the lead on this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make some introductory comments, but I'll let Jean probably work through most of the actual red line of what's been before you today. I do want to just recap kind of where we ended up today based on our previous meeting. So, staff did prepare ordinance at the June Planning Commission meeting for you to review. Planning Commission did defer action on that, as was stated earlier as part of this meeting. Subcommittee was formed, member Jean Babanick, Mr. Connolly, as well as Mr. Ryan, served in that subcommittee, and they have produced a revised version of the ordinance for your consideration. Without going into some of the highlights of the actual ordinance, I'll let Mr. Babanick do. I do want to add in a few things that were noted based on the commentary that we have met with some of the stakeholders and some of the public, public agencies since the last time we've met, which would have included, as Mr. Spencer, Councilmember Spencer shared, Beach Patrol, the resort, the community association, ARB, a laundry list of those entities. That would also include Crown Castle and our, our providers, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon as well, and, and to include American Tower, who's the, the, the other tower that's on the island. I'll defer to Jean, and then, once you guys get into the language, I think there's a couple of things that were noted in, in the text that I think may appropriate as commentary as such, so I'll defer to Jean now.
Okay. Thank you, John. And thanks again to John Connolly, Robert Ryan, and my name Spencer for helping us on this subcommittee. So, just the highlights on the major changes that we made to the proposed text here. I'm not going to go through all of just, you know, the major points. We all agree that there is a problem, or we need to address the cell tower cover down the island, that is without a doubt. The other thing is, none of us are engineers, so we're, we're trying to do this, our best intentions at heart in terms of getting this regulation correctly. The height provision was the first thing that we wanted to tackle, okay? And on that, in the draft before you see, we set the height at 150 feet, and in cases where the power providers want to go over 120 feet, there are a couple of conditions that we would have to go through with an engineer to document the reason for going over that threshold. That's modeled a little bit after what was being done in Seabrook, as a way to just make sure that we're exercising due diligence or protecting community interest and making sure that the towers are as high as they need, but not too intrusive. And if there are questions about this, by all means, people, just let me know. This section as well, section three, I'm talking about on 12, 103 and 3, that could have been worded differently as well, I just put this line out there, because the more than about there is the more, I, time zones are available on it. We could have set the tower at 120 and made exceptions for people that want to go up to 150, but then regulations put out those same guidelines there, so I'll put that out there as a discussion. I, as an engineer, I would want to approach this, we want to set a cap at 150, and when people over 120 have conditions set in, or do the vice versa, set it at 120, and say you could address higher heights by meeting certain conditions. As, I thought about this further, you know, there are things right before the permission here. In section one of that tower height provision, right, where we talked about a two-mile radius, that does not currently capture the proposed tower at Ocean Park, okay? So, if there's any language that we want to include in there to validate the height, whatever, we can certainly talk about that amongst ourselves in the commission.
Jean?
The third area that we had a kind of primary focus on within the regulation was public notice. As I said, everybody agrees that there is public interest at heart here in terms of what we're doing. This might obstruct some people's views, and the people's view for their houses, et cetera, so we figured out the public notification language, put a couple of means out there for your town newsletters, specific notifications, people's in fiber for the radius, et cetera, balloon testing, most mandatory. We're doing everything we can to make people aware of what the new potential towers will look like. The only thing we can't do is read the notifications and respond to it, so we're trying to make public to, to go and play on what the molding back might be and visualize it as best as possible. The rest is in the interest of the public. So, those are the, the major changes that we made within regulations. We'd like to open up to discussion to figure out what goes through our backgrounds as we see fit. And Larry, hopefully you have some expertise of this to your resident engineer on the commission, so.
Mary Pepp?
Guilty.
Do you add something?
Exactly.
Did you want to?
I, I really, I, I don't think it, I don't have a big desire to say 120 or 150, it's just how you, how you approach the ifs, ands, and buts, so I don't, I don't have a big.
I, I think I prefer the, and Jean and I have talked about this, that we take out the May and say that communication towers are permitted, so it's as of right.
Joanne, can you back up and tell us where you're reading?
I'm reading section 3A, tower height provision.
Okay.
You know, that as of right to 120, and then higher with meeting certain conditions. So, they can do 120 as of right, which is, like for Ocean Course, the tower is 70 feet tall, so that's a huge, you know, in addition to it going from a stealth tower where the, with old technology, it's going to go to a monopole with arrays. Even at 70, it's, it would be hugely better, and at 120, is it enough? I don't know. So, we have to talk about, Jean, what conditions? So, we do 120 as of right, and yes, they can go to 150 based on what?
Well, they go to 150 based on similar criteria within subsection 1, points A through E, right? There are no nearby towers that would be able to do what they want to do on the proposed tower, if they're able to go to 150, and then we have to see, and the specialist on the floor.
Didn't we agree that A through E really don't impact Ocean Course? Those are more relevant to.
Right, A through E does not impact Ocean Course. If you want to do something specific to Ocean Course, I think we'd have to put another section, under that section one, to say if there are no towers within a two-mile radius of the proposed tower, the tower company would have to do, endure, or possess, by common conditions. And I just, and one of those are surgery conditions, coverage conditions, whatever they are, but we do need to address something like that.
And the reason that Ocean Course is not included in this language is why? Because it's not an existing site?
Because.
Well, if you look at the, I, and I don't know if John cleared on Anguro, I did some type of crew two-month surgeries of different points of towers on the island, so, and two-mile radius, not personal court, correct? Personal court, it goes on to several points. If you look at Ocean Course, right, the items like Ocean, yeah, the ocean's name area, that was all by itself, if you do two-mile radius from that location there, there are other towers within that two-mile radius, so that one did it all by itself out there.
I just want to reference, just as you have this discussion, that the, the ordinance is not necessarily dictating just one tower, so look at the collective body of, of all the towers on the island. So like, you aren't creating a rule just for one tower, I just want to keep that in perspective.
Yeah, I guess.
John, I'll leave it there, back to the question?
Sure. Sure.
In terms of structure, right, if, if we were to change the wording, right, to the type of provisions that's maximum 120 feet, but, you know, if you need to talk, you should go up to 150, could that be done, or would it be easy to chime in or do some prior group or something like that, you know, within structure or regulation?
It would be, however the Planning Commission makes recommendation on it, so if you, if, if it, if you, right now, and the way the language is crafted, is that maximum will be 150, anything greater than 150 would require a special exception.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure we're on with that, thank you.
Yeah, we've talked about this amongst ourselves, John and Jean and I, and I, I mean, I was more of a proponent to, just, let's just say it's 150 feet, that's the max. And I only say that because we need to express a willingness that we are, you know, going to help push Kiowa into the next century. And these, you know, the cell tower people are, you know, if they have to go through another hoop to get from 120 to 150, they may just say, you know, screw it. I mean, it's just, to me, it's like, we know there's a problem, we need to address the problem, and the problem seems to be that 150 mark. And that's it, that's what they get? They figure out how to put how many people on there they want to put on there, carriers, and, and be done with it? I mean, it's, I mean, we're just kicking the can down the road, I think.
I'd like to ask, I was in the Crown Castle meeting, and Ms. Kimberly, I forget your last name. I, would you mind coming to the podium? I seem to recall in that meeting, we had a lot of discussions about this. You know, we were talking about, well, you can make the tower so it can extend to 150, but you really don't like to build those kind of towers, but you would build a 120. Could you talk to that a little for us, please?
Sure, just, and I'm, I'm not an RF engineer, so if we get too technical, I may rely on some of my colleagues for that.
For the record, just state your name.
Yeah, sure, I'm Kimberly Adams, I'm with Crown Castle. Essentially, what we're asking for, what certainly the hope would be, would, when we're talking about a 150 tower, the way the ordinance is currently drafted, your rad center of the top carrier would actually be at 145. Then with their equipment, you know, you're going down about 15 feet between every, with each carrier. Currently, there are three carriers, for example, Ocean Course Drive, three carriers that want to be on that tower. There may at some point be a fourth. But when you're, when you keep going down that distance, obviously at 120, which, again, would be a rad center of 115, not 120, the way the ordinance is written, I believe, then we're going down again, and you're getting into the tree line. So that is the reasoning, certainly, behind, you know, the one request for 150, and it is correct. We need to know, kind of, when they're designing, all looking at how to design to improve Kiowa Island, there's a huge difference between 120 and 150 for them to look at that and design it all together, proactively, not to do it a case by case, and we might get this, we may not get this, let's build it this way, but maybe we'll extend it at some point. It's very helpful for them to know exactly what height, what rad center they will have for, for, you know, both that specific site, but also, in this case with Kiowa Island, you know, a holistic plan for the island, so.
Can you speak at all to the coverage difference? Like, right now, it's a stealth tower that's 70 feet tall with ancient technology, going to a monopole with arrays at 120. What's the, what's the incremental, we're trying to get a handle on the incremental.
Right, so the, the reasoning going from the stealth, kind of that slick stick that, that you see out there right now, that actually can only accommodate 4G technology. So with going to the monopole with the full arrays, what that allows the carriers to do is put both sets of equipment on their rad center. So basically, they will have 4G and 5G, but then, you know, all on that one rad center. Now, if you were to build a brand-new, say, concealed structure, the slick stick, as we call it, like what's out there, then you're going to have to have two rad centers for each carrier to have 4G and then 5G, and again, we're getting into the tree, you know, truly into the trees there.
Given up on the stealth, we're, I think we're all in agreement that the monopole's the way to go.
Yeah, but basically, the reasoning on the monopole is to allow a better ability for them to have all their equipment on that tower, so.
Can I add a comment?
Sure.
One of my background experiences, I think you all know, is I was an executive with one of the cellular companies. It's pretty amazing that we've actually got them here. I, I think it describes the problem, and whatever they build is very cost-constrained. I've overseen the construction of dozens of cellular towers, and you get one shot at it. And so, whatever they come in and do, that's what we're going to live with. They're not going to come back in a couple of years and say, oh, we want to tweak it and do this, do that. They've got tens of thousands of towers across the country. So when they come in, they're going to do it, they're going to spend what they can afford, and then they're going to move on, and we're going to have it for a generation or two.
I have a question, I think it's for John, and maybe for you, for the subcommittee. Is this a case where, is there any risk that this is a case of everybody's for additional cell towers until they're in their backyard? So the question is, what allowable sites could these be built on? And is that, I couldn't really figure out where in the ordinance that issue was addressed other than, and maybe it's not, maybe it's in the land use and zoning. We talked about this last night, that there aren't that many sites that are available under the current land use and zoning structures. So, I, I just want to focus our attention just for a moment on where these are allowable, and, you know, has that been kind of internalized by any, you know, kind of folks that are, you know, proximate to that?
Yeah, good question. You're correct, it's, it's in our use table, so communication towers are conditional use under a few categories. One is going to be the commercial category, and as well as our resort, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation zoning district. The other category is our CS, which is our community support, so think SOAR rail, those utility tracks, that's, that's where they're conditionally allowed.
Okay, and is there, is there a working premise among, I don't know, the, the various working groups here, and maybe this is a question for this group, is there a working premise about where these things are going to go? Are they going to go in the existing sites? Has, like, has there been enough focus on exactly where these are going to be at 150 feet?
So if you recall, at our previous meeting, there was an introduction by the cell tower companies for a drop and swap provision to be added into the, into the ordinance. The reason for that, based on Kiowa's land development patterns, there's really no other places for new cell towers to be, to be built. They're going to be in the existing sort of vicinity of where existing towers are. They're not allowed in any of our residential zoning districts, and they have to be a certain distance away from a residential structure. So, we anticipate that any new tower is going to be sighted in the same vicinity of an existing tower.
I, I think that this is a case of not wanting to discuss the issue in the abstract, but in the very specific about these towers are going to be going here. And I think we have that information in terms of where the existing sites are, because that's going to be the affected area, you know, and I think it kind of speaks to this issue, 120 versus 150 and, and related.
Yeah, and, and Jean and I, and maybe Jean will talk about this, when we were going over this, redoing some of the wording in H to talk about drop and swap, because that's really what we're talking about.
And then, if we have towers with increased coverage, maybe the engineers can speak to, how many towers would we expect to have on the island at the end of the day, once we get taller towers in a handful of places? That's really important as well.
Are either you guys engineers?
Both of them are, I thought.
Could you?
You're on the hot seat.
You've been recruited.
Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
And everyone, the engineers addressing the, the coverage issues, is that also a function of the 5G versus 4G, all TV coverage, so is the towers operating with new equipment? Does that, you know, itself give better coverage on existing tower?
Yeah, sure, I'll answer both the questions. My name, my name is Raju Budraju, I'm a radio frequency engineer by profession. I'm a manager with T-Mobile, I manage the network deployment here in this area. Again, thank you for inviting me, I appreciate your time, that I'm here. So the first question, how many towers can, can cover the whole island? The, the design of cell towers is based on what we are trying to achieve. It depends on the age. It depends on the area and the coverage, right? Of course, the island itself is, has got its challenge, it's, it's a peninsula, it's, it's extended, right? So we, right now, have four towers that, that we are on with Crown Castle, our partners here. And that's pretty much adequate coverage that can cover the entire island as we speak today. How is it gonna look 10, 12 years from now, I obviously can't tell you that. But as of today, we feel that these are the right locations, and we should be able to cover the area within that height that we are gonna discuss and finally come with. So that's the coverage part of it. Moving on to the next question about 4G versus 5G. Every time there is an expansion or, or evolution of a technology, the, each technology has, provides better service to what is already there. Like, when we were in, back in the 2G days, or GSM, as some of you might know, we only had voice calls, right? Then, then data came on board, and now we have a lot more bandwidth we can use, right? So anytime a newer technology comes on board, you have a lot more complicated and much more evolutionized technology. At the same time, it gives you a lot more features and access to different things. 4G versus 5G, obviously, 4G has limitations on how much bandwidth it can use. 5G can extend that bandwidth because it's a much better technology. And that's pretty much what I can give you, if I can answer any specific questions, I can provide you more details.
Would you expect to be, or best earning place for T-Mobile based on the island, is most at 4G or 5G currently? I don't think it's mostly 4G.
Right now, it is 4G only, yes.
And that's because you're in the stealth towers and it's all.
Exactly, when, when we build these, we, we had the 4G technology at that time, so we built it only for 4G. Now, if we have to add 5G, we don't have the ability to do that because of the situation the towers is and the complexity we have right now. So we're asking for, providing us the opportunity to get 5G technology on these cell towers.
And for you to get 5G technology, okay, if we, doing away with stealth towers. So new tower will be a monopole, so you can do your arrays and all around the whole thing, as opposed to having them within a clad structure.
Exactly.
What is the marginal improvement in coverage, given you're gonna get a huge improvement just from going, even if you kept a 70-foot tower at Ocean Course, just going from clad to monopole, you're gonna increase your coverage right there. The more you go up, the more coverage you get. Can you give us a sense of how much better coverage you get at each of these different heights? Given, and given it's all gonna be monopole, no stealth.
Yeah, I can't give you an exact number, primarily because you're, you're talking about, when you're talking about radio frequency signal, it, it depends on the penetration, right? When you have a lot more foliage, like in the island that we have, the penetration is, is tougher. So we need that extra height so we can cover as much area as possible. Today, even with the cell towers that we have, there are a lot of locations that coverage is not adequate, like, like we talked about before. So where, where we are today doesn't give us that ability because the height doesn't exist. Once you're able to go above that tree line, you can start penetrating a lot further. And it also gives us the ability to add in all the frequencies that we own, and that'll give us a lot more penetration. To give you an exact number is harder because it's, it's complicated to explain that in, in a better way. But like you said, it's surely gonna give us a lot more coverage than where, where we are today. And that's why we feel like the higher height that we are proposing would help us cover the entire island, island as much as possible.
So, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, for example, if you get into more advanced applications, like self-driving cars, you need 5G, don't you? You can't do it on 4G.
No, yes, you're right.
So that's one application, there's other, there's gonna be other new functions coming on where we're gonna use 5G to, to, to do automation and things that are gonna run automatically on 5G. So 5G is, we've been talking about this in context only of communications, but gotta remember that technology is moving, and it's gonna be invasive in a lot more ways in our life. When you call, what's the name, Waymo, when you call Waymo, he's gonna need 5G to get to your house.
So that's a good point, I know we were talking about coverage, so I didn't go into the functionality of it. With 5G, yes, there's, it's, it's endless in terms of possibilities, because the connected cars, the IOTs, the sensor connectivities, the video conferencing, i- it's limitless on what it can provide. So there are a lot more advantages with having a 5G network.
And if we think about locally, is that they're, they're gonna automate kitchens now using 5G technology, because we can't get the employees, so we're gonna automate things. So I, I think it's important to understand that this is, goes beyond just making cellphone calls. This is, we've got to, I think Lance made the, the comment, that we have one shot at this, and we've got to look ahead a little bit, what's coming down the road. I'm, I'm a pseudo-engineer, more manager than I was an engineer, anyway. But I know, the first thing that happens is form's gotta follow function. That's, that's, that's a mantra of, of engineers. And the first thing you gotta do is, you gotta define your functionality, and you've gotta, then that becomes what you're engineering to. And, and I just want to make sure that we're all aware of the fact that this is more than just making a phone call.
And, and one other thing is, we've been building this 5G network for the last six years. So Kiowa Island itself, even though we want to build it, we can't take that step because, obviously, where we are at today. So if we can get that, we should be able to go build that and get 5G as soon as possible.
Larry, aren't we assuming this is 5G, though?
I'm sorry?
Aren't we assuming that the, whatever we're building for now, like, it's 5G at a minimum standard?
Yeah, I did, I did.
Yeah, okay, just.
And, you know, given looking forward, how do you guys think about satellite coverage? You know, how is that going to impact what you do on a pole versus what comes from the sky?
Satellite today is a complimentary coverage that, that, that we're providing, and this is only in areas where there is no cellphone coverage. Again, satellite has its limitations because you can't connect back. If you look at traditionally cell phones versus cell tower, a cell tower is something that's transmitting a signal, and your mobile is a very small device with a little power that can transmit back. You can imagine the distance that it has to communicate. When it comes to a satellite, it's much more harder, that's why there is a limitation. We do use satellite as one of our services, but it's only complimentary in areas where there's absolutely no coverage and only for emergency reasons, where people can text when there are an emergency. Where will satellite end up many years from now, that I, I would not be able to quantify that.
Can I ask a question too? There, there are currently two monopole towers on the island, right? Kestrel Court and Vanderhorst. Are those capable of supporting 5G antennas, or do you know if they're gonna have 5G antennas on them?
Well, the monopole at Vanderhorst is a wood pole.
Okay.
So I, I think it's an old one.
So we do have four cell towers with Crown Castle, none of them have 5G on them. There is an ATC tower that, that is on, on the other side of the island, which is 5G capable today, and the one that you can see outside the window, which is actually 5G capable of.
I see you're on all seven of our towers. You're the only one, I think, no, you and AT&amp;T are on all seven.
It's the Berkeley site, which is also a wooden pole, so it's in the same situation as the Crown Castle poles, as far as, you know, just not able to accommodate 5G.
And is the intention at Kestrel, to replace it or to supplement it? At 165 feet, why isn't that kind of sufficient? Or does the technology have to get upgraded there?
That is not our tower, that's American Towers Tower, and that I'm aware of, yeah, there's not a proposal for that.
I'm still trying to get to the question of where these are gonna end up.
So I could speak to Crown Castle's four towers. Crown Castle has four towers ranging in height between 70 and 90 feet throughout the island. The plan truly is, and we are working with the carriers, all the carriers, not just T-Mobile, Verizon and AT&amp;T, to hopefully do what we call a drop and swap, which is basically, we will build a new tower. Hopefully, you know, the hope is a monopole somewhere around 150, and then the carriers that are currently on the smaller tower will be moved over. Then, in, for example, the case of Ocean Course Drive, there's a new carrier that, Verizon is not on that tower currently. So they will install on the new tower, the other tower will be removed. So of our four sites on the island, yes, we are considering drop and swaps for all four of them.
And, and what would be the priorities?
Right now, it's Ocean Course Drive.
Right, and then after that, what would be next?
We're, we're all having conversations on that, some of that's being kind of held up, or we, we, we appreciate you working on this, but we really need to know what the ordinance says, obviously, to realistically analyze all that, so.
And, and can I just ask one more, and then John will. So you, thank you for your help, mentioned that T-Mobile needs four towers to cover the island. We've got seven now. Did I not, did I misunderstand that? I thought you said that, that you, to appropriately cover Kiowa, there would need to be four, you all would need four locations throughout the island.
I'm sorry, I mentioned that, so let me rephrase this. I was talking about the four towers that we are in discussion here.
Okay.
I don't tell, I might be wrong in terms of understanding the Kiowa total jurisdiction by myself. So there are other towers, like we talked about, there's an ATC tower, which you can see right here.
Right.
Is one of those towers that we are already on, so I'm not counting that. So I'm only talking about the four towers that we.
The Crown Castle towers, okay. And I guess what I was trying to understand is, right now, we have seven. If we go to 150 on our towers, are we gonna still have seven towers at 150? Or does that mean we get to have fewer towers? And if so, I mean, do, if we need seven towers, do we have four locations by providers on all seven towers? Or do we have, I, it, if we have better coverage with a taller tower, I don't then understand why we would need seven, it's just what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
So when we met with all three carriers, and Crown Castle, and American Tower last week, we asked that same question. Because there's been a lot of confusion on that. The short answer is, they said, all towers would need to be upgraded. Now, what, what that upgrade turns into is gonna be an application by application event, based off of what the ordinance said and what Kimberly meant, I don't wanna say what you meant, but. The, the give and take going on right now is, we're actually gonna do site surveys today with them on what would come next, but she can't get the investment from the company until we know what the ordinance is gonna say. So it's that, that give and take going on. So, and keep in mind, there's the question about Kestrel Court, there's no appetite to upgrade Kestrel Court that they've expressed to us. It's got the, all the right radios, it's got the right height, it's got all that, the other.
Then that's kind of, I know it's 165 versus the max of 150, but that's kind of a proxy for what would be going up in other, in these other sites, correct?
Yes, the other site which people talk about, besides the four from Crown Castle, is the Berkeley site, Vanderhorst. And then what we call a tower is really the roof of the Ocean Course, or not the Ocean Course, the sanctuary. And that does have 5G, which has been an arrangement that Resort worked with the companies on their property to have that kind of coverage for their guests.
Lance, my, my question was, the process, if this all got approved, are we looking at these new towers in the next year, next five years? Are we, if, if one is built, is there a process to assess how much of an improvement it's making? How will we know that?
So realistically, from a construction standpoint, we, of course, do have to go through a full regulatory process with the FCC to drop and swap these towers. So once we know the height and can finalize the plans, that, we will have to start that process, as well as, of course, the process with the town as well for approval. So I think we are looking realistically into next year, between the regulatory process, but then, of course, you know, our, our true application process, the balloon test, all that, that goes into a site-by-site approval.
But will that be done for multiple towers at the beginning, or just for one tower?
It will be done for each tower, the way my, the ordinance reads, it has to be done, tower, you know, application by application. Oh, timing of it, Ocean Course Drive is certainly a priority right now for all the carriers. So that is the one everyone's been focused on, but there may be some that certainly come in at the same time. We were planning to go out and sidewalk our other three towers together. So we are hoping to get that all done together, so.
Okay, so your other three towers, and Jean, I'd like you to address this, because this is something we talked about with your two-mile thing. They're talking about both Cougar and Turtle, which I think you said are both within two miles of Kestrel Court.
Right, that, that's actually a question, and that's gonna back up. There's mention that there was no appetite to upgrade the Kestrel Court tower. Is that from the tower people, the cell phone providers? And if that tower was upgraded to 5G, would, would that stop the need for a higher tower at either Cougar or Turtle?
The, the Kestrel Court does have 5G.
So there's no, you said appetite, but you meant need, or is there no appetite because there's no need?
Because there's no need.
Okay.
Yeah, so they wouldn't ever be able to get the investment, because the, the data they analyze to get the investment to do the upgrades, they'll be like, well, we're gonna spend a lot of money, you're gonna get what you got already, so.
All right, 'cause base, Jean, based on your A through E on section three, there would be issues of, you know, 'cause I don't think we were aware that you're looking at all four of them. Now, the Berkeley site, is Berkeley, Lance, are they looking to sell it, their, what's, are we talking to Berkeley at all?
We are talking to them.
'Cause, 'cause Vanderhorst is outside your two-mile radius, I believe, from Kestrel.
Regarding the Berkeley site, it's been, I would use the word whispered to us, that they are looking to maybe off, offload that. There's been no direct conversations of if there's some agreement or anything in place to date. But that's a future thing, I think, whether the town or one of the other cell towers would engage with, with that property owner.
You guys want another tower?
I asked her the same question. And we've initiated conversations with Berkeley. It, it's a different kind of conversation, because that's not the business Berkeley's really in. So we're, we're kind of working through some, some, just getting the right people involved.
Isn't Berkeley within the two-mile radius of Osprey?
I, I'm not really sure where the two miles came from.
Based on the map, it is.
I, I'm not sure why we're discussing two miles, to be honest.
Well, that's because it's in this draft resolution.
But I don't understand the engineering and the science behind that, so.
Jean, you're gonna.
So that was purely based, I was looking for comparable statues, right? So the nearest one I looked at was Seabrook, and Seabrook does not pose any type of problems on their towers, but they do pose a two-mile radius that's where if there's another tower within that two-mile radius that they're accomplished. What do you want, you want a proposed tower? You have to be aware of that during the, during the process, so that's where the, the two-mile radius came into play.
That might be something that we want to take out, given our towers, they are where they are, and that's, we're, we're just really looking at drop and swap. And so we're looking at these locations. Now, I don't know, and another engineering question, sorry, you know, if you know, you got, since T-Mobile's on all these, if they were to do a big tower at Cougar Point or Turtle, then, you know, maybe you don't need one at Osprey. That's where the coverage issue comes in, you know, do we need four new towers to cover this island?
You're, you're gonna need all of them, and, and Raju will back me up, John, for the record, Jonathan Yates, 105 Broad Street, Charleston. You, you are gonna need all of them.
All seven?
Commissioner, Commissioner, you nailed it best. Let's take care of it now for the future. The 150 will work for now and for the future. Jean had brought up the two miles that he found in the Seabrook ordinance. That is in some of the very, very old ordinances, back when we were doing one in 2G and the coverage from that. As we've advanced, most, most offices now have a separation of 1,500, or you can see in your thing, a, a thousand feet. So the, the key today, and I know you guys have done an incredible lot of work. Lance and his team and his committees have done a lot of work. We got a chance to solve this. You have an issue, you're not in the, you're not in the 21st century for coverage. And Commissioner, Mr. Mann, bringing up everything that comes with 5G. I don't know if Waymo is gonna be on Kiowa soon, but that's just one example of everything you get with this technology, the assorted. Our opportunity today, 150, 120, back and forth, 180, the carriers can make it work at 150. We got the infrastructure in place to get this done and get it done right, and that's what I'm begging you to do. Let's don't get hung up on the details or the questions. You have a good ordinance, we can do it, and then we're, we're set for the future. We don't have to come back in four years and say, oh gee, it didn't work. Let's do it now, and let's do it for the future.
If I could just add to that real quick, and I am an engineer, by the way, but, and even though I'm an electrical engineer, I do not have the experience that Raju has to understand how to do this. And when this comes to Town Council, I'm gonna say the same. And when this comes to Town Council, I'm going to say the same thing, because there's three engineers on Town Council. I encourage people not to try to reverse engineer and over-engineer what the engineers are doing. There are a lot of variables involved in designing cell coverage. Raju touched on several of them. It comes into the frequency bands even. You're using 800 megahertz for 4G, you're using mid-band, mid-C band for 5G, you're using band 14 for FirstNet. They all have different propagation, they all have different characteristics on how they react with the foliage, how they react with the open air, how they react to everything else. That's why we've got guys like this that do this. So my encouragement is to not try to second-guess the engineering. 5G or 150 feet is the standard nationwide that people are building to for all the reasons we've discussed.
I have a slightly different question, which is, several of these properties are resort properties, Cougar, Osprey, Turtle, Sanctuary. I presume that the resort would need to give permission to build 150.
Roger did it the last meeting.
So for all of those sites, he's given approval?
The resorts on board. I guess, you know, we all agree, we need to improve coverage on the island. We also answer to our constituents and people, you know, if you look at the Osprey, the Osprey Tower, which at 97 feet is above the tree line, that's in a much more residential area than Ocean Course. And people might feel differently, you know, you go up another 30% versus another 50%, you know, we also have to answer to people who live there.
It's above the trees around it, it's not above the tree line where the devices are going to be existing. So the trees that it will propagate towards are higher, so it's not above that tree line.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, to take up on your point, you have a duty to your constituents. One thing that Lance and the other member of the committee stressed, public safety. And we have to get back to that, where we're talking 120, 150. If one person doesn't get the call out, we don't get the helicopter in to get them to Roper or MU, what was it worth? And I think that's the key. Your duty is aesthetics, certainly, but more importantly, public safety is your duty to your constituents. Thank you.
I have a suggestion, I'm not the chair, so procedurally, tell me if I'm in bounds here. Should we just do a pulse check, you know, among the commissioners right now in terms of, you know, 150, 120, like, you know, let's kind of parse out the points that we're discussing here? Because I think that maybe we have some alignment on some issues that, you know, or we have other questions that are still outstanding.
Sandy, I just have one question before that. And my question is, we mandate a balloon test to inform. We do the test, people are outraged. What happens?
Thank you.
The people that view it say, I don't want to look at that. And I don't have any facts to back it up, other than some Google stuff that I've done. And it's pretty clear that these towers do cause a reduction in property value, to some extent, for people who have to look at it, so.
They have the opportunity to come to the commissioners and, you know, complain all they want and say, you know, I'm against this, I'm against this, I'm against this, and, you know, and then it's up to the commission.
No, no, I understand.
So I mean, they have the opportunity to disagree.
I'm just, we're going to have, we have the people who absolutely need better coverage. We have the people who will sit on their back deck by their pool and look at 150-foot tower. That's, people can dismiss the aesthetics. There are a lot of people think the aesthetics are a real problem. So I guess it's a quandary for me, it's a really, it's a real mystery.
Well, that's why I keep coming back to where are these going to be? So we can assess exactly that question.
No, I, and that's why I keep coming back to how many will we actually have? But regardless, I think we need to fix this. I think that it's going to take 150 feet to do it, from what I'm hearing. I wish I were hearing that we wouldn't need as many, but I don't really feel like, sometimes I think I'm hearing that, sometimes I don't. So anyway, I'm in favor of going to 150 there, and I, but I'm in favor of a lot of the structure we have in here around that. I do, the balloon test, I think we should do, but I do wonder what we're going to do. I have a feeling it's going to be the same people who on IKEA want better cell service who aren't going to be happy that they can see the balloon. But I, I mean, the balloon tests are awesome, but is, what do we then do? Is there anything, John? I mean, the people can come in and talk to Town Council, or, I mean, I don't want to get all this in place and then have that be another roadblock down the road.
No, that's a good point. I still have trouble, I mean, I look at the town where I was doing planning before, and we built, there was a new tower built by our Public Works Garage, and it has lots, it's a monopole with all the arrays, and we get great coverage, and it's a hilly area with trees, and it's 100 feet tall. So I'm looking around, and I think, John, you and I have talked about this, that we've been taking pictures of every cell phone tower we see since we've been doing this.
But, yeah, don't you, I do think we have to remember that, a couple of things. First of all, it's way more than cell coverage that we're dealing with here. Way more. I mean, it's even updating utilities. So I think it's more than just coverage, so I don't know that we, as someone visiting a place, would always be able to read how well their cell service is working from a big-picture standpoint. We might be able to see it from our phone and how well we're able to do things. But I think we also have to be forward-looking. I mean, we need this to work for a long time, so anyway.
So to your point, to your point, Madam Chairman, what we talked about before is that you got to be very careful when you're using average data.
Right.
You got to be very careful. We have a, we don't have to worry about average data. We've got an operating environment we know, you know, we've been operating in. And so what worked up there, it's probably, there's probably characteristics that we don't have here and vice versa. So I'm with Mary Beth, and I believe, and again, as I said before, form follows function. The function's got to be number one. Safety, communications, all the things that we, going into new applications to come. So I'm in favor of the 150.
And all four locations?
Oh, I don't know that yet. Same thing I just said, is that, what are we trying to accomplish? What is the, what's the functionality? And if we don't need 150 feet and the engineers come back and say, this one could be 120, that's fine, that's fine. But what we're sitting here is, we're sitting a limit here now.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, I mean, express, what's our threshold? I mean, you know, I'm totally for 150 feet, if we're taking a straw poll.
Do we believe, and I believe, that the market will define four versus seven? No one's going to build a tower that's not needed.
I certainly, but, yes, I am hopeful that there is no reason that that wouldn't hold.
But I am, as you are, concerned that, you know, people abstractly want better cell service and want it in someone else's backyard, in someone else's location. And, you know, so I don't know that the dialogue to this point has focused enough that these are the locations, I don't know if there are additional permissible locations according to, you know, again, the land use and the zoning. But, you know, people at Osprey, people at Cougar, and I don't know where these physically are located, what hole, et cetera. I live by Kestrel. I've come, you know, long ago, I don't see it anymore. So, you know, you get to that point.
Yeah, I was going to share my own anecdote. I was, I didn't even know there was one that big at Kestrel until we started talking about it. And the other day I was walking down the beach and I looked over just to find it. Oh, there it is. Put my head down, kept walking, I was in this ocean beautiful, aren't this vegetation beautiful, aren't these homes beautiful? I mean, it's like, out of sight, I mean, not out of sight, but out of mind, because we deal with it, we live with it, they're all over the world. And, you know, you go across a bridge, you see one, because you can see it in the distance. John gave this anecdote. But as soon as you get into the trees, it's gone.
It's gone. I do have a process question. So if we approve the ordinance as it stands, with the assumption, and maybe it has to be codified, that it's these sites and it's a swap and drop, or whatever the language is that you use, is there some kind of community comment period after that in terms of the individual tower locations? Because I can just imagine that there could be quite a bit of, you know, community debate on that, as it goes to the very specific of here it's going to be at this height.
To your point, my concern has been, the advertisement of this really just came out last Friday. I mean, I know there have been all these other meetings, but the general population first saw it last Friday when the town finally issued something about a May 1 meeting, and it referenced taller towers. It didn't reference 150-foot towers, didn't say where they were going to be. And yes, there was definitely a lot of stuff apparently on IKEA about service. And I think we all understand people have problems with their service, but we haven't heard the other, I don't think we've heard the other side, I don't, I mean.
I can't imagine people coming out in favor of 150-foot tower. You know, the only, I think the odds are overwhelmingly that would just be negative community commentary.
Right.
And then, and then what? Back to square zero.
Yeah, and then what? That's the question.
The priority of any, of our group is, number one, it's safety, safety.
Well, that's what I get back to.
And that's, and the big, and the beach is a big part of that, because the beach is, now, will this Ocean Tower, Ocean Course Tower, will that solve the beachfront problem? Sorry, Kimberly, I'm putting you on the spot.
In that area, but I can't speak for the wireless carrier, so I guess hypothetically, do you want? Do you, I mean, it just.
I mean, where are the towers that will cover the beachfront? To fill in those gaps and on 4th of July, when you've got a zillion people at the beach and you have a problem? Where do we need to put towers to solve that problem? Which one of these solves those?
Well, I think the question would be, are the seven sites we have now, does that solve the problem?
If they're upgraded, yeah.
Exactly.
If they're upgraded.
I think at the Public Works meeting, Brad, I forget whether it's you or Dave, asked the question, if we were starting from scratch, how many towers would we need to cover the island? And didn't they say, do you remember that meeting?
I actually remember that, but you could be right, Joanne. I know we may have said, somebody may have asked that, but I don't remember.
And we looked back and clarified that with them, they backed away from that.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And we asked them again last Wednesday with all three carriers there, and they unanimously said, that was a misstatement if it came out, that's not accurate.
Was the July 4 incident on the beach along the entire length of the beach?
Yes.
So the Kestrel Tower, Kestrel Tower didn't help at 70 feet?
It's because the tower was taken on to load for the whole island.
Especially because.
The only, it couldn't hold, the water pipes weren't big enough for the water?
It's the number of devices.
So we don't know, so that, what came out in our past meeting that was inaccurate information? About three, you know, if we went to, because it was asked at the Public Works meeting of, and it.
Forward with the new, existing towers, replacing them, just not putting three in.
Time to call for a.
Okay, well, we need to find.
I think, John, we're going to say, is this change, is this, does this just apply to all of those three sites to get public info before the town council votes on it?
So regarding the approval process, this goes our standard text amendment process where Planning Commission will make recommendations. Our formal public hearing will be held with Town Council. And so that's an opportunity for formal public comments that would be received by the community in front of or directly to Town Council. This meeting has always served as that venue as well, in front of our commissioners. But that would be the official public hearing at Town Council whenever that's scheduled.
So there is no notice put on these sites where it goes to neighbor property owners that this is being contemplated?
Not for a text amendment. So this is a zoning text amendment. So we did advertise in our standard, our newsletter and in our, the posting courier, but there isn't a posted sign notice. Now, based on how the ordinance is written, now, we would post that for the balloon test. We would post this, the property for the balloon test, and additionally with the public notice letters.
Site by site.
Site by site, correct.
Jean, do we need to change, you know, this, you and I talked that a lot of this wording came directly from Seabrook and might not be relevant to Kiowa. We've got this two-mile thing, which definitely would impact several of the Crown Castle sites. Do we want to keep this wording?
I, I'm going to ask the commissioner, I'd rather leave in there as a safety net, make sure that there are all the towers that accommodate the proposed hour of our constraint that section, David, but that's a little more issue.
I mean, it sounded like there was no scientific reason to have two miles.
Can the ordinance be limited to the existing sites?
I think as a practical matter, it is, because there's no other place to put them.
Are we 100% sure of that?
I mean, a cell tower company could make a recommendation that a new tower is built, let's just say on a different, if the resort releasing property back to the cell tower says, hey, we want it in a different location. It could be in a different, on a different hole, a different area on the golf course. Most of the towers today are around the maintenance yards, areas, or at areas that are less visible than, you know, high-traffic areas. But hypothetically, yes, it could be by request placed at a different location.
Or on a water tower.
But it would be very cost prohibitive. There's a significant amount of infrastructure, starting with the fiber that has to run to the location, and then the communications equipment that's at the base of the tower that you don't see because it's hidden. But all that stuff would have to go in place, so it would be a significant expense to not use the existing locations.
And I think, given how built up we are, from a practical standpoint, we have these locations. Ideally, we wouldn't want big towers at all of them, but. So I think we need to focus on some of this wording if we're going to approve this and move it on to Town Council.
So the first question is what you said earlier. Should we just go to the 150? It's sort of a challenge, Jean, that you posed, or, because the way this reads right now, I think that it's approved up to.
Up to 150, yes.
150, right?
And it does have, if it exceeds 120.
Yeah, the way that the language now, that goes, that the two-mile radius section that you guys are discussing, the reasons or the rationales that are associated with that was, from my understanding, Jean, was to accomplish the showing that 120 would not be sufficient. So anything greater than 120, the applicant would need to at least identify in their materials, say, hey, we've tried in these things by one of these reasons, this is why we're going to 150.
All right, because like Turtle and Vanderhoest are close together relatively.
No, I'm not, I am no way engineering any of the towers and any of, that's not what I'm talking about.
No, but I'm just saying, by having it, if they're over 120, they'd have to show that they needed it.
So diligence, exactly.
Which, which we believe the need is already there, but this just adds it to their actual formal report.
Okay.
I mean, looking at too, does it know what the community's support for the issue? I don't know.
All right, so what's our thought on this? You know, because the way it reads, if the height is over 120, it needs to have a report that states, and then the communications plan for the proposed communication tower cannot be accommodated on any existing or approved communication tower within a two-mile radius of the proposed tower location due to one or more of the following reasons.
I thought we decided we were getting rid of the two-mile radius.
Yeah, so Lance, Jean, what do you guys think of this? Rob?
I don't.
With permission, Madam Chair, the two-mile radius that creeped in from the Seabrook ordinance, we need to take them out. This one's confusing. This is archaic.
Language that I think Seabrook originally got from Beaufort in the 99.
Hand it down over the ages.
Yeah, I'm always.
Back in the 2 and 3G, so, yeah, if we could take that two-mile out, it's just going to complicate. I think Jean has done a great job. 150 is the maximum height. If you go over 120, you got to put a report in via a qualified engineer, industry represented, showing a need that additional 30 feet for all the carriers. So the two-mile could be problematic for Mr. Taylor and Dan and Mr. Vincent in the future. I think it just complicates things.
Yeah, no, and I, yeah, no, I agree. Lifting ordinances that have been lifted and lifted and lifted, you don't know what the original thought was, and it may not be relevant. So I don't have. So I don't have a problem with that. But we don't say specifically then what we want this licensed professional to say.
Not necessarily, it would not be a licensed professional engineer. It would be a qualified industry representative. And they would simply justify why they need the additional height in order to provide the coverage for the technologies they're trying to deploy.
So one, one, gosh, this is a very deep reference here. But we were talking about one at the bottom of page, page one here, that would be struck, but the A, B, C, D, E would remain?
Well, they didn't make a lot of sense to me anyway.
I think that's a question for Rob and Gene and John. Is that how this would work?
Or were we talking about just striking, uh, the subsection one, striking the language within a two-mile radius of the proposed tower?
So you mean have it read, communication equipment plan for the proposed communication tower cannot be accommodated on any existing or approved communication tower due to one or more of the following? Take out within, take out within a two-mile radius.
Yeah, and this.
But leave due to one or more of the following? Now, do these reasons make sense?
No, they, these are also.
Yeah.
They've also been lifted and lifted and lifted. You need to, you just need to get simplify, take out the two-mile, take out the A, B, C, D, and E, and leave the language up above, radio frequency engineer, other licensed. It, it should say, to clean this up, yeah, radio frequency engineer, and I would take out our other licensed or certain professional.
Certain professional.
Yeah, yeah. So just, yeah, take out the two-mile and take out, and Gene has done some great work. Gene, I'm not faulting your work, but just.
I was just going to say, if we change some, some, right? And I think this is where you're going to, so if the height of proposed communication tower exceeds 120 feet, i.e. that page must be accompanied by a report from a professional engineer, radio frequency engineer, or other licensed or certified, certified professional, that justifies its height?
Yeah.
That justifies the marginal increase.
It justifies, it justifies the additional height. It justifies the additional height.
For those of you who don't know, this gentleman's a lawyer.
No, my mother said to tell people I sold used cars, so don't please.
Joanna, did you want to change the May to the R, A?
No, then we leave it May. We leave it May. If we're going to keep 150, then it's may be permitted to a maximum height of 150, subject to the requirements set forth. Go with the flow on that one. I still have complaints. Okay, so to be clear on what we're changing, and then we're going to need an amendment proposed?
Do I propose it?
Yeah, Gene, why don't you say it so we have on the record exactly what we're doing here?
Okay, okay, my right here. So.
We're leaving, we're leaving A.
12-103M, 3B, towards follows. If the height of proposed communication tower exceeds 120 feet in height, its application must be accompanied by a report from, from a professional engineer, radio frequency engineer, or other licensed or certified professional that justifies the additional height, period.
Okay, and.
I lost track of where we're at. Do we have, do we have a motion on the table for this, or do we have?
He's, he's making.
But you got to have this as a motion first, then you've got to, then he's going to make the motion.
Yeah, okay. We'll make it an official motion, but that's what you're going to move. And that means we're taking out one.
Striking subsection 1 and A, 3.
Okay. All right, Gene, do you want to make the motion?
That was to Mr. Iwan's point, did we get a, a motion to open up?
Yeah, we, we, we made the motion. We're under discussion right now. Yeah, we, if we did the motion at the beginning, that much we knew. All right, Gene, so do you want to make that an official motion? You can say what you just.
Okay, so.
You move what you just said.
Motion to modify subsection 12-103M, 3B, to say, if the height of the proposed communication tower exceeds 120 feet in height, its application must be accompanied by a report from a professional engineer, radio frequency engineer, or other licensed or certified professional that justifies the additional height, period.
We have a second.
Before we second, you said two, correct? I thought I heard three.
No, section three is tower high provision. Three, one.
No, it's section two now.
Section two.
It's section two.
Yes, and here it is, you're right.
Yeah, so, so I just think you need to.
Wait, I have it as section.
It's redlined, it's redlined.
It's redlined.
Redlined to section two.
Two is redlined on mine, and it's three.
I just want to make sure we have it correctly on the record.
I don't know where that comes from.
This is the revised one John just gave me this morning or yesterday.
Okay, I'm looking at the one.
John, Gene, it's section, did it change post packet? It's section three. That's the most recent iteration.
Has been changed.
Okay.
So then what's provision two?
Two is the co-location.
Oh, so we've added that back in then?
It never got it.
The versions we all got in our packets, that's been redlined.
Oh, okay, yeah, I got, I have the most recent.
Apologies.
No, that's okay. There've been a lot of iterations. Okay, do we have a second on Gene's motion?
Second Gene's motion.
Because you can make the same motion and.
Gene.
If you make a second motion on that one, that's real.
On, on section.
Make the one motion and.
Yeah, why don't you make it, section 12-103, conditions of use, one, you have crossed out A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Yeah, we should make a second motion on that one after this first motion is approved, if that's okay, or.
All right, the motion's out there. We have a second. Any further discussion on that amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none. That amendment passes. Go ahead, Gene.
Okay, I'd like to make a second motion to revise section 12-103M, 3B, 1, to strike subsection 1, subsections A through B from that section.
What did you say second? You started with 3B, or it's section 1.
3B.
Where is this?
Subsection 1.
I think his prior motion, I think your prior motion already did that.
Ah, okay.
Because you changed, you changed that entire section to read that, so I think those are already eliminated. This is the one that's not redlined. This is the one that is the, came, just, that's the word document.
Okay. All right, well, it does, it looks like it's already, it's already gone. This is the.
No, no.
This, this is the one he's looking at. See on mine, the redlined version? Not section three, we did that already. This is section 1, purpose and intent.
I didn't think so.
Okay, so those are all gone already.
This is the one we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
This is the one we're talking about.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at the other redlines. Go ahead, Gene, sorry.
Well, I think that earlier motion that will eliminate that subsection already. Great, Mac.
Yeah, because you, you changed the, the sentence in sub, at the, I guess, the beginning of subsection B, so all of the one and everything else below, that's eliminated.
Right, okay.
Good one.
All right, is there anything else? And then I don't, you've got the clean version. Is there anything else that we're amending? Oh, on H, the 1,000-feet thing, we've got to do something with that. On six, H, on page three of seven, towards the bottom, proposed tower, this whole 1,000-feet thing. Gene, do you want to take?
And that was, the 1,000-feet place, the language in our old stash in here, so my understanding is that the, when we're doing the drop and swap, the new tower will not be in exactly the same height, it will be closer, except we took the old tower. So I think we need some variance or some limitation there.
Didn't we talk about changing that, you and I, when we talked earlier this morning? Didn't we talk about changing that? To put in, proposed towers will be drop and swap at existing locations? Is that, is that legally enough?
John? John Taylor? Would you say a location would need to be more exact?
I, I would recommend the original language or something there of comparable that was in there previously regarding the drop and swap. This language in here that says proposed towers is to replace an existing tower at the same location, I think this is, is okay, because it's not giving the exact coordinates of where that new tower would be, but it gives in, maybe it's the word adding, the vicinity, in the vicinity might help clear it up a little bit more.
Yeah, take out the 1,000-feet, because that didn't make a lot of sense. Kimberly, do you have any comments on, on this? Because it's your towers that we're locating.
I think that that would be if somebody's building a new tower, a brand new tower, not a drop and swap, it needs to be separated.
Yeah.
Existing tower.
Right.
And then it goes into, unless the existing tower is to be removed, that covers the drop and swap.
Yeah, I don't think we want that.
The section H is because of the, the original ordinance is carryover. It's encouraging what we call tower farm. Why H isn't there? That's a carryover from the old county ordinance.
Yeah, so we don't want that.
Drop and swap.
We don't want tower farms.
I'm going to ask if, if anyone, if y'all are speaking, y'all have to come to the mic so we can pick that up, yeah.
Yeah, so how should, do we have some recommended wording on this? Mac, do you want to help us out here?
I think the language, John, didn't you send that, wasn't that in the first packet where one of the cell towers sent us some suggested?
It's two, it's, it's really two different provisions now that I'm looking closely. This provision is, wouldn't be necessarily directly addressing drop and swap. So this is really a new tower distance separator from a existing tower. So I wouldn't recommend any changes to this. This is just a metric to say we don't want to place any towers closer than 1,000 feet of each other.
1,000 feet is pretty close. That's not, it's.
Yeah, but with, with Kiowa's geography and the available sites, it, it still would be limited, I mean, in, in the amount of towers. And the engineers would, would have to work that out, right? They're not going to build a tower next to each other that serves the same, serves the same.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm wondering why we need this, because 1,000 feet, that's less than a quarter mile.
Isn't the intent that you can only have one tower per some unit of land? I don't know how you would define that unit of land.
So this is one of those, this is one of those metrics that's trying to accomplish a certain distance between towers.
If we already have the defined locations.
Yeah.
And I don't know how you would describe those by, you know, you know, there's some zoning metric or something that could define those, but isn't, I mean, the real point here is that we don't want more than one tower per location.
Yes.
So do we need this section? I, I don't understand why we need it.
I mean, this is our existing code. I, I don't see any harm to keep it there.
You know, if it, again, goes back to old Charleston County, again, same as lifting from Seabrook, is this not applicable to Kiowa?
And again, on Kiowa, the carriers are not going to invest in another tower within 1,000 feet of them. So I think, again, this language, I was actually one of the drafters, the original Charleston County ordinance, and that was, that was simply put in there. In some areas of the county, they were encouraged, like when you go to the intersection down here of River and Main Road, that's a tower farm. So that was just left in for that purpose. It's not really relevant to Kiowa. You can leave the language in, it'll never, no one's going to ever look at section H again. I think you can leave it as it is.
So is there a reason to leave it, or why not take it out?
You can go either way, but.
Why don't we just leave it then?
I'd just leave it.
I'd, I'd just leave it.
Question answered. Okay, and the addition, the proposed towers take place in the existing tower, the same location in the existing tower is removed pursuant to block, so that's drop and swap. Okay? Anything, what else we got here? Does Crown Castle have any issues with all the, you know, drawings, deposit requirements, professional services, et cetera? You're all okay with all of that? That's all standard, okay. Public notice, the subcommittee adds, added. Any other?
I have two quick questions.
Yeah.
First of all, John, are we on page, it's my six of six, I'm not sure what number it is with the one that you and Joanna are working off of, but it's, it's section 10B1. Are we setting ourselves up for any issues with the whole not impacting the character of National Register of Historic Places or rivers with any of the ones that are on the backside of the island? I just want to make sure that we don't have a problem at the beginning.
That's a good point, because no matter what, the tower isn't going to blend into the environment.
No, especially if it's, if the one at the Van Dross location goes up higher. I just want to make sure it's not a problem on day one.
No, that, the ordinance, the way it's crafted, it leaves that, leaves that discretion.
Okay, so I just wanted to check on that. And then, then the other question, more just relatively new to town functions, who monitors our performance bond, who, bonds, who, who monitors those, makes sure they're current, makes sure they're renewed, those sorts of things in town?
Yeah, finance.
Okay, so just, I got it.
Okay, so John, you don't have any problem with, Mary Beth's question was a good one I hadn't thought about. The location and height will not substantially impact the character of the property. I mean, we don't have a lot of historic places here, but the towers aren't designed to blend into the environment and minimize visual impact. We're not talking about putting tree, tree towers up, you know, we can't do that even if we wanted to because of hurricanes. That isn't going to get us in trouble with, I'm just thinking of some of the community members we have who might say, wait a minute.
So there is a catch-all for that purpose in section C. So if there is something that is significantly detrimental or significantly adverse, this could be shifted to the, to the border zoning appeals for a special exception.
Because, I mean, it's going to have a negative aesthetic visual impact. There's no way around that.
I mean, that's still subjective, but as I say, it's, it's built in discretion for that reason.
Are you proposing just to take that out?
Well, I don't know. What do you guys?
I think it would, it would, it would give staff the ability to weigh different circumstances. I would not recommend eliminating it. I would recommend it stay as is.
Okay, because you know then if it stays as is, there are going to be, there's bound to be at least one in every neighborhood that will.
Well, I don't think we have, I mean, I think that there are a hand, just a handful of locations that the, that those issues could really, right, come into play, national, I mean, a property listed on the National Register of Historic Places.
People in Ocean Park who face the Ocean Course thing, they're going to see a.
But, but that's, I mean.
That's a negative visual impact.
Okay, well, they're the same ones who want better cell service, anyway.
I agree. Lance, what do you think about those clauses?
If John's comfortable keeping them.
Yeah.
Okay.
You recommending eliminating it? That's what?
Well, I'm just wondering if we're going to do this, if that's something that's going to slow the procedure down or come back to bite us at some point? I mean, what do you?
I mean, if it's eliminated, it doesn't harm anything either, so it's one of those things, staff is comfortable either way.
I think simpler is better, to be honest.
You think, I'm sorry.
So you think take it out, Lance? Yeah, I mean, fewer impediments make the process.
I think if we are in agreement that we're going to build these things, they're going to have visual impact. They're going to have negative effect on aesthetics. There's no way around that.
So as I hear, striking, striking under 10, 1, B1?
But that's just one of the impacts that we have to consider in this whole thing too, right? So there is going to be a visual impact, people, because there's also the safety considerations. So, you know, I'm in favor of leaving this in, and it's one of the factors we're considering in the overall approval process. in the overall approval process.
I, I-
You could stop at rivers, just say scenic roads and rivers, period.
But, yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess it just all depends on how much of a public safety issue we want to believe this is. I mean, I think it's a pretty significant one, so anytime you allow an impediment to that, it costs time, which could theoretically be lives.
To Mr. Ryan's point, if you wanted to keep at least partial of there and eliminate after, eliminating essentially the, the minimizing visual impact and blending into the environment, that clause, eliminating that, if that's a middle ground from what I'm hearing.
I'm good with that.
All of B1?
And if there was-
No, just stop at rivers, at scenic roads and rivers, period. Just-
Period.
Because the rest, the rest of that paragraph is specific to historical context, not your neighborhood or your backyard or your-
Right, but I think one of the places where we have a location is probably right next to a place that's on the National Register. Is, is it not? Where are National Register sites on the island? Yeah, there you go. That's, that's, we've got a, that's one of the sites, right next door. And it's closer, it's probably the closest one to the river. But we're going to get rid of rivers, so that, that takes care of that. Anyway, just saying.
I could say, I, I would support eliminating B1.
I'm in agreement with taking it out.
Would you also take out C2 then?
And one thing to add, for any new tower, we are required to apply to the state historic preservation office. They have to approve the tower. They do the review for any national register site, eligible site, archaeological. We also have to apply, I think in this case, to seven Native American organizations.
Okay, so there, there is a, a stop there that you all already have to deal with as opposed to us having to have it here.
Under the carrier's licensing, they have to have what we call clean SHPO. SHPO is State Historic Preservation Office. They also have to have clean THPO, Tribal Historic Preservation Office. Any Native American organization that lived on this, on the island or migrated through has the right to review it.
Okay.
We're good. Just to clarify, it's part of the NEPA process. If you've heard of NEPA, we are subject to the full NEPA process and when I alluded to our federal regulatory process, you know, being, you know, kind of something we, we need to get our design resolved so we can start that process, that's what I was referring to. Thank you.
So bottom line, folks, in or out?
I'm good with B1 coming out completely, but I can support something else if other people feel strongly.
Larry, what do you? John?
I'm fine with that as it is.
I would remove it, but I think you're right that C2 would, would also come out.
Yep.
I agree with that, yeah.
Taking C2 out?
B1, C2.
I would agree with that.
I think we have to.
Because it is.
I think we have to take one and two out on C. And, and they're covered through-
Through the-
Through NEPA, yeah.
All right, so we're looking at taking out B1 and C1 and 2, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
And that's the, the motion is to take out B1?
Motion is to remove number 10B1 and number 10C1 and 2.
Do we have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, it passes. And I think, believe it or not, that gets us to the end of the ordinance. So now we have the original motion on the table.
I just wanted to highlight a couple, a couple of things under that same section 10 that should have been redlined. This is under the zoning permit approval criteria. Right now, it listed that a complete zoning permit application for a communication tower that meets all requirements of this article may be approved, approved with conditions or denied. It should have read a complete zoning permit application for a communication tower may be appro, may be approved with, may be approved, approving conditions or denied. That would be staff's recommendation there.
Is that what it says?
Where is that?
Right now, it reads that if all the criteria are met, then it could still be denied. So just to-
If they're all met, you can't, you shouldn't be able to deny it.
Well, that makes sense. Oh, so you want to take out, it may be approved or approved with conditions?
No, I think you want to take out the denied, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Or, or saying that meets all requirements of this article, I think, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Either or, either, either or would, would do the trick. So either denied or-
Cleaner is or denied, if I may again. I'm sorry, I apologize, keep jumping up. Yeah, it was cleaner because this is, as your counsel will back me up, this is a conditional use, so we need to take out the language or denied. If you meet all the requirements-
Right.
As a conditional use in South Carolina, you have to, you have to be approved, but you got to meet all the requirements.
So-
So if you just strike or denied.
Strike or denied, so I'll leave-
But what about, it says approved with conditions. It can be appro-
Yeah, they, it can be approved with conditions, but just take out the two words or denied.
So all the requirements of this article may be approved or approved with conditions?
Yep. Yep. So do we need, we need a motion then?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we amend section 10A by removing, by adding the word or so that it reads, a complete zoning permit application for a communication tower that meets all requirements of this article may be approved or approved with conditions.
So you took it off?
So we are taking or denied.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? It passes. All right, any other comments, changes to the conditions of use 12-103? Okay, I believe there was a motion on the floor and, um, because we changed the order, I actually am thinking about it may have moved the resolution as opposed to the, um, the amendment to the ordinance, so just to be official, let's move it again so, so we have, have it right. The ordinance requests, no, I did do this AZ, yeah, we did, we did it. Okay, um, so we needed, the motion was on the floor to approve this. We have made amendments, so now we need to approve the amended ordinance. Okay? So we had a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the amended ordinance, case AZ 025-000005? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, it passes. Okay, thank you very much for all your work. Thank you to our guests who, we appreciate your being here. Your information was very helpful to us to get this done and get it done right, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
John, just, just one thing, I, if you're going to put this out as a public notice for the next planning, for the next town council meeting, I, I would encourage a little more specific information in it rather than just say taller towers. I think we need to be very specific as to what's potentially out there. That's, that's just my opinion.
I agree with that.
Okay, um, now moving, moving on to the next item of business is the Kiowa next update, the comprehensive plan review and discussion. I want to thank Stephanie and John in particular, they have done a lot of work on this. The commissioners, we took a document that we all felt wasn't very good. We, um, did the best we could in the past few months without throwing out everything and I'm, I think we've come up with a better document and a lot of people have done a lot of work, so I want to thank all of the commissioners for their work on this. It was a collaborative effort. John, is there anything you want to add on the update or shall we move on to the amendment?
I mean, procedurally wise, we would want to have you guys vote on an actual document. We know that that still be made some edits, so, um, it's just how, the pleasure of the commission, how you want to move forward.
I think we've seen the documents. We really want to move this off our plate to town council today. Is this Mark, where you wanted to make a couple of comments? Please? Yeah, no, go.
I just want to add, thank you for your comments and I do apologize through our migration and other, I am, what I'm doing right now is I'm taking essentially all the edits and like the bullet points and all that, so I am essentially on page seven and what I'm doing is I'm just going through the entire document, throwing it into Word, so I'm catching typos. So that's all I'm doing right now in the last three days. I apologize, my goal was to have this, I've, no excuse, but I've just been in meetings and I try to work from, from home, but then my migration didn't work, so my goal is to have this, listen to Mark's comments, and if you guys have any more edits, I'll shoot out kind of what I have. And then the goal is to have a, try to have a clean copy no later than Tuesday because we're closed Friday for the holiday, for you all to take one more look, even though if today you move forward with it, you can still go ahead and look at it, make, if you see any edits, let me know because I'm not sure if they, if you make a recommendation to approve this, we still have to do advertisements, so we may not even go to council until September. We have an advertisement, do 30 days, correct? So even if you essentially still go ahead and approve this, I can get you an edit version. We have to advertise it 30 days, so we won't even get to council until, for public hearing and first reading to the September meeting, now unless they have a special call meeting. But the, the goal though, that this will become, it will be, you know, should be adopted by the end of this year.
I thought if we approved it today, it could go, when is the August meeting?
Well, we have, August meeting is August 2nd, but it'd have to be 30 days. We haven't started advertising this, so we're not going to meet the 30-day requirement. So we either have to, they can have a special call meeting or they can take this up at the September meeting for public hearing and first reading, and then second, second and final reading will be at the October meeting. It'll be adopted in October if we don't have a special call meeting.
I, I will just say that I know that all of those edits are not material. They have no impact on substance.
They don't.
It's all form and typos and-
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, but it still may not meet it because we still have to do advertisements, so we have to count back. If we can, if we can get it on there, fine, but if not, it won't meet because we have not submitted this to posting, we have not started advert, we haven't submitted to the journal to be advertised, the newspaper, so it may make it and may not.
I was hoping it would be on the August meeting because we're starting to run up against deadlines.
We're okay in terms of the deadline. As long as we have this adopted by the end of this year, we'll be fine. So if we get it, if we get it on August meeting, great, but if not, the September meeting and August adoption will still be fine. A special call. Correct. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they can, council can do a special call meeting.
This is an issue, we talked about it before with the, with the planning commission meeting following the council meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that.
But in the day, this will be, will be fine. This will be adopted either by September or October and we'll be okay. Like Commissioner said, a lot of the things right now is just typo, so even if you guys, if you guys approve it today, John can get the notice out, we'll do the 30 days, we'll talk to the mayor. If we don't make the August meeting, they may do a special call meeting in August and then September, so.
Yeah, I think, um, if we get it out and, and we talked, I think, John, you and I talked about this, that if there are any changes, we can send a note to town council saying, you know, please make these changes in your final approval process.
Yeah, between first and second reading, if there's nothing substantive, council can, we can make some edits and changes between first and second reading as well. And we do that, you know, some, a number of times with our ordinances, so it's normal practice, it's okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Uh-huh.
You know, I know this migration to a new system has thrown a monkey wrench in the, in the works.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. First and foremost, I support the comment that this is an excellent document. It's not only better because of the additional two or three months that everyone on the panel contributed to it, but in comparison to previous comp plans, this is a far better comp plan for the greater community. Someone could pick this up and read this within 20 or 30 minutes who's totally unfamiliar with Kiowa and have a really good understanding of what makes Kiowa its unique community. So I want to commend everyone involved in making that happen. I do have a few comments though, and maybe a question or two, if you'll bear with me here with my notes. There, there are several references to initiatives that would suggest joining particular areas of focus together in a collaborative way. Some of you might remember about 20 years ago, there was an effort to do this amongst the four significant players, the two for-profit entities and the two nonprofit entities, and it existed for about two years, and it was very helpful in terms of just some common ground addressing that. So I think this is a really good thing. I hope it receives the attention that you recommended to it. The only suggestion I have is to include the Kiowa Island Utility Company as a part of that. It wasn't necessarily called out, but there's a-
It wasn't, yeah, in an earlier iteration, the KIA you're talking about.
Yeah.
We had Kiowa Island Utility in an earlier iteration.
I would just suggest consideration of that because they are a significant player on primary infrastructure and it's, it's just a suggestion in terms of-
You're right, you're right. For whatever reason, that was dropped.
Yeah, it was in an early, we'll add it, it was in-
Intentional.
Numerous early iterations.
Okay.
Again, bear with me here. On page 101, and it's also present in other callouts where there's an attempt to represent in a very succinct way, which is excellent, what has been developed to date by category and what's, what's possible in terms of going-
Are you looking at the, because I think my page is, I've got urban growth boundary on 101. Are you looking at the land, what, what do you-
Land use, and the page number I'm looking at is 101.
99.
I hope I'm on the right.
At the comprehensive land use category?
No.
No, what do you look, what's he look?
I'm going to 101.
This is 101. Oh, I'm sorry.
This one.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to see if I can slide them, show them simultaneously here. You can keep going, I was-
The magnifying glass over that, cast it down this way.
He's looking at the-
No, you're good.
This page.
101.
Yeah, this is the data.
Here's the only suggestion I have is, there's nothing inaccurate about this, but in theory, it could be a little misleading, and here's how. We're outlining what's possible in terms of the number of residential units total, both the combination of what is existing as well as what could possibly happen in the future. In a similar fashion, we do that with hospitality, the hotel room count. But the reality is you can't achieve both of those.
We understand.
So my, my only suggestion is additive, it's, or clarification or annotation that suggests that. And I'm, I, you know, I suggested earlier in a couple of other workshops, a, a possible and a probable case.
Yes.
If you want to shy away from that, I get that, but I do think something that represents something closer to a reality of what, what could, I, I'm trying to think of the proper words.
I think, yeah, I think you're right. Mark, what we tried to do in the Kiowa by the numbers section in the very beginning of the document-
Yeah, right.
Because we understand there's a trade-off.
Right.
You know, you're not going to build to the max in multifamily and build to the max in hotels.
Right.
That there'll be some swap out in, in those ranges. I don't know if we hit the mark in how that was represented in Kiowa by the numbers, but if you have any feedback on that.
Well, I'll take another look at that if that's okay, and I could give you an upper, lower range-
Yeah.
As opposed to a definitive range, if that's okay.
Then we have the same issue about calculating growth rates, you know, do you- You know, do you use the midpoint, you know, whatever? So, yeah, your thoughts on that would be helpful.
Okay. Now, on page 103.
Tell me what the subject is.
Uh, which is future land use categories. It's still in the same, John, should I just go forward with it?
Yeah, okay, got it.
That's 103 here.
Right, okay. So it's under the commercial category. So I have a question and then a comment. So how do we count hotel rooms or anything related to hotel? Is that commercial? It's not, it's not a trick question, by the way.
Oh, you're saying is it commercial or residential? It's, that's an interesting question.
Here's what, here's what I'm leading up to. Let's take fresh fields as an example. If, if the 100 hotel rooms and the square footage attributed to it is a different category than commercial, then my comment about FAR is going to be different than if it's included. But it's, again, it's not a right or wrong question, it's a clarification question.
Would this be clarified in the use table?
It would make more sense to be in the resort category, not governed by FAR. Because it, hotel, in the general planning principles, hotel rooms are this blend or in between commercial and residential. You don't, you generally don't attribute FAR to this category. That's, that's, that's all I'm going to say. And then I want to suggest something more definitive about the FAR.
Mark, would you mind defining FAR for us?
Floor area ratio, right. You take the.
I see, I see it now, okay.
You take the amount of, it can be two different ways. It could be gross leaseable area or total building square footage, which are different.
Okay.
So you generally take total square footage.
Okay.
Because it's an impact issue, FAR is an impact issue. And then the amount of acreage, so it's a, it's a factor. So what I'm leading up to is you're representing for commercial an FAR of 0.2. What is your understanding of fresh fields right now? What would you guess fresh fields is right now, the FAR?
Don't know.
Okay, this is a trick question, by the way.
What is it?
It's 0.27. So I would suggest that you consider, and I would suggest fresh fields is not overdeveloped or underdeveloped. I think it is a blend of one-story structures and two-story structures. The idea, two-story structures provide options available for office uses, professional services, a variety of other things. So rather than increasing ground coverage throughout and increase, it, it allows for more efficient use of land and compression, walking distance relationships. Am I making sense? So I would, I would suggest that 0.25 is a more realistic number for Kiowa in proper as a whole. And it's not too far, it's not an extreme. I mean, urban areas are like 2.0 and 3.0 and a variety. So I would just suggest that to be considered.
Do we know where the 0.02 came from? Because this is in the original document 100 years ago.
We'll take a look at this, Mark. We're not going to make any changes now, but.
I'll take a look at it and I'm not pushing a particular strategy as much as that's a, that's a very reasonable, realistic range for the nature of our community where commercial is allowed. That, that's the, that's the key. And there's additional commercial and fresh field, you know, it's not a whole lot.
Look at it, I gotta look at the zoning code and, you know, I'm not sure about unintended consequence. We'll take.
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing it out.
And Stephanie, the only other thing I have is that, that thing dealing with the green space acreage parkland, it's a technical thing. That's, that's a lot of my comments or suggestions. As I said, I want to recommend or I want to suggest that this was a, I know this was a messy process of transition from how it started to where it ended up, but it is a better plan and it can lead to better community evolution. As is called out here, the real pressure point, and that this is not to take away from future first development, the balance of property that the resort has or the little bit that Kiowa partners have. The real pressure and concern, if you look at the history of second home communities as a whole, all over the country, starting up in the Northeast, starting with Newport. Could you ever imagine the mansions in Newport being converted to, you know, condo buildings? I mean, the pressures show up in very unusual ways as second home communities age. And you've started, you've called this out. I think this is going to be a real mission for our community as a whole of how our community ages going forward. But thank all of you and everyone in the staff, too, for doing this work. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we now have the resolution. We're getting there, folks. The resolution, which has some typos in it, I've talked to Petraia, including my name spelled wrong if I have to sign this thing. The resolution 2025-01, which is a resolution to recommend adoption of the 2025 Town of Kiowa Island Comprehensive Plan QWANext. Just a couple of typos in the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth, whereas, if you read that sentence, it doesn't make any sense. Whereas the future land use map is amended, or you're supposed to say as amended? Should that be as, John? And then as amended. In the comprehensive plan, there should be an in the, in there.
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Yes.
I apologize. I apologize. If we go to page 103, where we're calling out the future land use categories, okay? Under high density residential, where the call out of limiting to 12, 12 dwelling units per acre, that's all aligned and correct. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, let's see. Oh, we're already on it.
Just above that. All right, real quick, what's your question?
I'm not going to be invited back.
Because we do need to move on. We've got some important things left to do here.
Okay, let's, okay, high density residential, all right. So the call out as examples are Shipwatch Villas, which is 20 units per acre, by the way. So you, we might want to change that out because the limiter is 12 units per acre. So we might want to use as example Quartzside or Parkside. Those are all like 11 point something units per acre. I'm just suggesting, if we, if we don't want to use something that's that far out of line, we don't want to do that. And Duneside Villas is really like a medium density residential. So, I mean, this is just a little niche, but we, you've done such great work here. You can finish it off with that, that level.
Thank you. Okay. All right, and the last, whereas, I'm not, whereas the Town of Kiowa Island Planning Commission has and voted to. Yeah, the and she, okay, take out the and. You know, because I think it's important that these, because that sentence made no sense. So Stephanie, you're saying take out the and? Where, who said, take out the and? Okay, has voted to recommend, okay. Those were my only, did anybody else have any typos or issues with the resolution itself? And you'll fix my name. Because I gotta sign it. Okay, can we have a motion? To, can we have a motion for the resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Larry's been waiting two years to say. Any further discussion on QWANext? This is your last chance, folks. No more.
No more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, 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 aye.
Any abstentions? Hearing none. QWANext is now officially moved to the town council. It is off our plate. Thank you so much, everybody. And especially to Larry, who's been on this with me since 2022 fall, when we started this. It is now done.
Well, 18 months.
Yeah, it's almost three years. All right, moving on, we have an interesting one here now. Zoning, this is for discussion. Zoning text amendment application, introduction of establishing Town of Kiowa Island Architectural Review Controls. John, do you want to talk us through this? I mean, I assume. Has everybody read their packets, so you don't need to.
Yeah, I'm not going to go. If everyone has seen the brief, I'll just highlight very, very shortly here that the intent is to, for the town to begin the process to see, to begin the town initiating its own architectural review controls. Many of you are aware of the, the current architectural reviews, town joint task force that was created some years ago. And so where we are today, there's still some uncertainty of where that process has ends up. And so the town, in its best interest, to ensure that those things occur from architectural review control standpoint, is going to initiate that process. So today is really just a discussion, your initial thoughts, initial comments, and then we'll, we'll go from there. But really, everything that you see outlined in the brief that was provided gives the town the ability to establish its own architectural review controls.
John, are these focused on, we're, this is just focusing on commercial and multifamily at this point in time?
Been no determination of that. That would be something that going through this process, similarly, a year ago, we established a tree and preservation board. And all of those decisions of what parameters meets and bounds of their purview was established. And so similarly, we'll go through that same process to say, does, does it make sense to only do commercial? Does it make sense to have single family? That's something the commission will evaluate.
I think this makes a lot of sense. I think there, it's, they've been, that joint commission's been working since, what, 2023? And I think there had been agreement to move the architectural review board to KICA. That's got installed. My understanding is there's, they might want to move, give KICA a single family residential, maintain control over commercial and multifamily, which I don't think is in the best interest of the town. So I, I think we should move ahead with this and develop a timeline and get the process going because I think it's important. And the town also has more of the infrastructure than KICA has. We have staff. You've already got zoning approvals, building department. So, so a lot of the infrastructure for doing this exists in the town. I don't know, does the mayor want to comment on any? Do you want, you don't have to, but you're here. If you'd like to comment on any of this with your thinking, but if you want, I think we should move ahead and, and start this process.
This was an issue I raised at a recent council meeting and asked staff to begin to develop the, the framework for planning commission consideration of this. As you noted, Madam Chair, it was really a product of the output of the ARB task force and unfortunately, not much real progress that's occurred with regard to the transition of the architectural review function from the master developer to the homeowners association, which, as we'd looked at at the ARB task force, when I was involved in with that, was extraordinarily anomalous. You will not find very many communities anywhere in the country where there is still at this level of maturation, architectural control within residing within the, the authority of the master developers. Almost always been transitioned to the homeowners association, if not voluntarily, by dint of legal action, which is what occurred in Seapine some 40 years ago, which was the model for a lot of our governance documents, general covenants and what have you. As you noted, at least I had been informed that to the extent that there was any willingness to transition some architectural control functions under the general covenants and the KICA covenants to the homeowners association, only be with regard, with regard to single family. That the master developer wanted to retain control with regard to at least commercial and potentially multifamily, unless and until all of their properties were developed. I'd indicated at the time that was, given that, my intention to try to move this ball forward for all the reasons you addressed. I think a lot of the attention has been focused on the island proper and areas within KICA's reserve. But to be clear, even if it were transitioned to KICA, that would only apply to properties within the jurisdiction of KICA. What we also need to be mindful of is Freshfields Village, you know, this parcel and ultimately in the future, should the town acquire or annex any properties. There are undeveloped properties within Freshfields Village. There may be redevelopment of Freshfields Village. One might ask themselves whether or not it would have made sense for the town to have some type of architectural control function or review of, for example, sea fields. So some ships have sailed, but not all have. And so that's what occasions the potential for tackling these issues on a go-forward basis because we do have a lot of undeveloped properties still on the island. We've got a few undeveloped parcels on Freshfields Village and there's always the potential for redevelopment as well, both on island and elsewhere in the town off island.
I have some questions, if I can.
Yes, please.
So having served in phase three of this joint ARB task force, so came into it late. There was a lot of work, including the benchmarking work that had been done before I got involved. That was a joint task force with the town and with KICA. And the recommendations were for KICA to take that forward, as you note. My question is, it hasn't progressed. My understanding is that there have been further conversations between at least Kevin, presumably on behalf of KICA and the partners. And the partners who were rumored to have early on indicated their willingness to transition the whole thing, it feels like that has moved backwards. So what, what would be different is, you know, kind of one question. And, but the other one is, under what authority, you know, do the partners have the right to just not give it up? Because my understanding was that there was a driver beyond kind of professed willingness to, at that point, transition that would, you know, would be a forcing issue.
So they can be in parallel. So that's in the covenants is where the developer controlled ARB review stuff. But there's also a state statute that allows local governments to have that process as well. So that essentially, if, if they want to retain their authority under the covenants, that would be one thing. And then the town would have its own process on top of that as an additional check.
So the covenants meaning governing behind the gate?
The general covenants, which would apply to all properties subject to the covenants. And there are covenants that are applicable to Freshfields Village, just as there are the general covenants with regard to the property that's on island. You know, ultimately, there is, as the town attorney noted, the only way to address the issue of the master developer current control of the architectural review function is either they voluntarily transition it. Number two is you amend the general covenants. That would require basically a signature, kind of like a U.S. constitutional amendment, a signature of 50% of all property owners on Kiowa Island.
Kind of like the covenants changes that were just done.
Well, no, it's actually, it's actually different.
Higher standard.
It's, it's both lower and higher. You actually have to get a signature of every 50% of all property owners. There's no time limit associated with that, but that's a cumbersome process. Or the third is, in some cases, it's been a matter of litigation as to whether or not the covenants are still enforceable, given duration or host of other issues. I, I think the one. I think the one thing that does need to be made clear, because this question keeps coming up, is if the town were to adopt, establish its own architectural review board, whatever scope of authority, whether it was just multifamily and commercial, or included a single-family residential, that it would still be incumbent upon property owners subject to the general covenants to get approval of the developer-controlled ARB unless and until they give that up.
But what would their recourse be? What, I mean, if, if, if you need a building permit and you've gotten approval from the town, would the town then hold up your project because you didn't have the partners' approval?
So separate out a couple of issues there. We've made clear, and this just came up in yesterday's council meeting, there is no longer, or used to be, on town zoning permits and building permits on the town's website and CitizenServe, et cetera, a requirement that before the town would issue a zoning permit or a building permit, you had to have approval of the ARB. That has gone away. The town's standards are, it's their own. Whether or not a property owner is obligated to obtain ARB approval under the general covenants is a separate matter. The only thing where the town interest arises is if the town has noticed under whatever provision it is that there is a restrictive use covenant that is inconsistent with the town's proposed approval. But absent that, it's a separate, it's a separate process. The difference is, if the town has its own architectural review board, the master developer could, its own ARB, could approve its own project.
Right.
As has been the case heretofore, that's all fine and well. They would still have to comply with any standards imposed by the town subsequent to that, which is not the case right now.
So it makes sense for us to do this?
Well, are we, are we asking, what is the actual decision at this point? Is it to launch a process to further evaluate and come back with a more specific plan? Or is the action right now to say, yes, we should do this?
Well, I think, I think it would be good if John can start us on the process. You know, let's talk about what it is we specifically might want to approve. And some of that was outlined in all this. And given, as long as we have the appropriate underpinning of legality for South Carolina that we can do this, we should do it, because you can't have the fox guarding the hen house.
True, but there was a lot of specificity in here that I can tell you that the task force took a lot of time to get to and came to slightly different conclusions in some of these areas. So, you know, are we moving forward with this particular plan at this level of specificity? Or it's a concept that will go through iteration where there will be further shaping?
So I would say it's the latter.
The shaping? It's a concept?
Just to get that, what's outlined is just a concept, just like I referenced, us establishing our own tree board. We would set, how many, what are they looking at? Looking at, we would set all of those things. So right now, if you want to rely on what the previous task force.
And all that work, I think it's, it's, it's a lot of work that has been done, so I think it's beneficial to use some of that. But it doesn't have to be the template to move forward.
Okay, I'm, I'm just reacting to, you know, some of the detail in here in terms of the composition of the board, the credentials to the board, the terms of the board, and all that kind of thing. That's a lot of specificity at this point. And there was enormous levels of debate about all those points. And some of these are just slightly different.
Yeah, I still have thoughts on those. Two at one. Yeah, that was one of my questions.
One thing about the, things like composition of the board, there are, some of this is, there are statutory requirements under the state enabling statute, which are wholly unapplicable, inapplicable to what might, Kika might do as a private sector entity. And how they want to finance that, and what kind of oversight, whether the board wants to be ultimately the decision-maker or not, those are very different. We're going to have to be guided in part by the statute. To your question, Sandy, my, my kind of expectation was, throw this to the planning commission now that you've finished Kiowa Next, another big project to take on.
We need something.
Just thinking it sounds like Kiowa Next.
But that, you know, we'll look at other models, like we tend to do, what other, you know, Charleston City has a design review board. It doesn't apply, I don't think, to the city as a whole, but certain areas and districts. And the types of question, does it?
They have one for, and that's a lot of time on the.
Yeah, yeah. Different areas, but it's exactly those kinds of questions. Would in fact make sense to have it apply to all development or just commercial and multifamily? And we can relied on the private sector entity to continue to do what it's done with regard to single family? Does you want it to apply to paint colors and things like that? Or is it a more limited subset of things? So that's the kind of thing that I would hope that the planning commission, with its extraordinary depth of expertise, and now a lot of free time on its hands.
So you are looking for us to dive into this, to put some parameters in place as to what that might look like, what it would encompass, how, how detailed or thorough it would go? And then some other group of people are going to look at how far we want to push this relative to, does this become the sole ARB? Or is that us too?
That's all, that's all, that's all the planning commission's province.
Okay, that's our, we can do this.
Ultimately, this would, this would go in the zoning code. This would be in the zoning code. So ultimately, it would have to be something that would go through the planning commission. Even if we, from an administration and staff standpoint, we did a complete draft of all of this, it would still be just a starting point for planning commission consideration. But ultimately, you guys would own that and make a recommendation to the council at the end of the day.
I think we want to move this forward sooner rather than later, because things are moving on the island. So procedurally, let's talk about what we do. John, you've done some of the work on this. I think we need a subcommittee to, to start working on this.
The S-word is popular, so whoever wants to join.
Well, I was thinking, Rob, you've got the landscape background. Would you be willing to work on it, to, to look at it from a landscape perspective? Because that's your expertise.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I mean, we, we have that ordinance already, that's landscape-related, but.
But this would be very specific. This is a different thing, you know, and John is going to help.
Yeah.
There, we, we have some ideas already from a framework standpoint. It would just be a couple of members that would be able, I think, give some direction and guidance.
I don't have that much.
I, I know. Who else would like to work on this?
I would be.
Okay. Is two and a half?
Sandy, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I would just say, in particular, a lot of the issues that consumed the, the joint task force was, A, cost. And I don't know that there was high integrity, like high levels of confidence around the cost elements that came out of that. So that would be something to think about.
Cost of what? Cost of operating?
Cost of operating.
That would be my one comment to you guys. Don't think about cost operating. Let that town council and them deal with that.
That's, that's an administrative issue. And what do you know, different than the three, you know, similar to the tree board or the planning commission.
Okay, that's fair.
There's no real cost, you are all volunteers. This would be.
Not to operate.
He hasn't gotten the bill.
What happened with the tree board, we recommended that they hire a person, a tree person, which the town council then approved.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm talking about the operation. Maybe that was obvious, not the, not the creation of the plan, but how, how you operate it, particularly if there's multiples now. If that is truly the end game. But the other, the other consideration was really talent in terms of, you know, who could viably serve. And I will say that having sat in on a number of the ARB meetings, there's a lot of, lot of expertise that's required to do this right, so.
I would think we'd have to hire, I mean, that was one of my issues when I looked through the composition of the board. You need staff who is.
Yeah, very qualified.
Very qualified to take the place of an Amanda Moller or a Jen Hayes. You know, you need, you need staff.
There's also institutional knowledge question.
Well, let's, okay, so you two are going to start on this. Let's talk about a timeline. Can you work with John?
Yeah, we can, we can work together and figure out the immediate where we are based on what's already been crafted and modifying that, and then we'll come back, have something to report next month.
Have something for our August meeting?
Just, yeah, I don't, not necessarily to vote on anything, but.
I'm going for like the, most of July and August, beginning of August.
Would it be inappropriate to meet with Kika to get some background and kind of current status directly? Do you have issues with that? Yes, no?
I think.
As of today, as of today, my understanding is kind of no.
So let's just move ahead.
Okay.
Let's move ahead.
I did ping Kevin. He has indicated that things have stalled, that conversations have stalled. Okay.
So we'll, you know.
We'll do a report.
We can work offline.
We'll come back with a report in August, but whether that's a detailed plan, I don't think it's going to be.
No, I don't think we have a detailed plan in August, but I think just some framework of.
Framework of things we can do.
I mean, I'm used to the old model, you know, developer develops, they do stuff for a little while, and they turn it over to the homeowners association, you know, and that's, that's, that's like.
That's the time-honored practice.
That's like 99% of the projects I've ever worked on, and, you know, a town having its own ARB, or whatever you want to call it, you know, not to confuse names, but is, is, you know, different. I'll just say that. I'll just say that.
It's actually not that unusual for design review boards. They tend to apply to like historic districts and things, things like that.
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm thinking more suburban, I guess.
The one thing, Sandy, your point, I guess the one thing I would note, because Kevin specifically mentioned this at the last board meeting, and I suspect would reiterate this on Monday, when they have their next board meeting, is their intention, regardless of a transfer, to move forward with establishment of a Kika architectural review function, at least with respect to its own common property.
What falls under that definition?
Common property is everything that's owned by the association.
Okay, that's such limited.
Sandcastle roads and bridges.
Well, it's, it's 50 miles of roads. It's all the leisure, well, most of the leisure trails and right of way. They actually don't own most of the ponds, but they do own some of the other Kika facilities like Cinder Creek, Eagle, Bass Creek, Eagle Landing, the Sandcastle, a few parking areas.
Yeah, exactly, on a pond, okay.
Well, but I, I, I think that's more signaling as much as, it kind of like, in some respects, like it's, okay, if, if the current path that we hoped everybody was on is not working, so let's just go down.
Let's go down this and see what happens. Rob, are you okay with this, being on this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just, the timeline's going to be, you know, difficult. I mean, I just think it's going to take a lot of time.
But at least we can have, yeah, it is, but, you know, procedurally, let's.
I hope it's not like Kiowa Next, but.
No, no. This is something that shouldn't take.
I want to take us to the tree board.
I think you had a work group, then through the ordinance, it was a year, right?
Over a year. We did the tree board in a year, and that was much more limited than I think what you guys are going to be looking at.
Oh, yeah. So if anyone else wants to join this subcommittee.
Yeah, no problem. I don't have a problem.
Okay, anything further on this? Okay, correspondent staff comments?
Yes, a couple of things. I just want to highlight ordinances that have moved forward, yesterday's town council meeting, things that you did recommend approval for from June. So the Ocean Park parcels were future land use map and zoning, rezonings, those did receive council first reading approval. Also, the ordinance 2023, I'm sorry, 2025-11, which was regarding the setbacks clarity, that, that was also approved by, by town council. We also got our first reading approval on the use regulations, however, a couple of things that we'll bring back to the planning commission for further study, and particularly one of those things that in discussion yesterday was around accessory uses. I won't belabor all the nuance, because it went a little bit of a rabbit hole with private tennis courts and whatnot, but I wanted to at least put that on the record, that we'll bring back something for the commission to have a conversation regarding accessory structures in its, in that whole 103 section, and I think would be appropriately for us to, to clean up in detail. The other notes regarding development projects, Sea Fields and MEFC, they continue to move ahead in their schedule. They're still pretty on track for their completion times. That's really only significant projects. Knight Here, and I think if you guys have been to Knight Here, and you see the progress that they're making as well. The last thing that I'll mention here is just a personal thank you to all the commissioners now that we're done through Kiowa Next, and this has been a long time process. So just a thank you to each of the commissioners. Thank you to all the ones who are in the room, including Stephanie, Petriah, Daniel, Mayor, and, and even Mark. Thank you all for contributing to this process to get us to this particular point. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is Resiliency Committee update? Anything on that?
Gene, do you want to highlight where you, the progress of that? I didn't want to step on.
Sure. Can you guys sit through here on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So not really related to Resiliency Committee. Mary Beth, Rob, and I, on the tree, I've got a call, Weston Sampson, regarding our permeable initiative. And we're going to design scope services for them to request services to look at the permeable initiative, you know, probably restrict stormarm damage across the islands. We talked about, you know, different soil levels, water tables throughout the island, things like that. So it is to a more complicated issue than we envision when we first have the rules shared up. There's more comment?
Thank you, Gene.
Sure.
Okay, any other public comments? Commissioner comments? Rob?
No, thanks.
I hope the traffic's moving when we go home.
Yeah, I hear you.
It wasn't good this morning.
No, my only comment is I need to catch up with the two of you on the beachfront work that we've been considering.
Okay. And I just, once again, thank everyone for all their hard work. And now for the continuing hard work on our latest addition to our plate. But I think we're making a positive impact on the town, and I think that should make us all feel good, even though it is going to take a lot of our time. And with that, a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
A move.
Second.
All in favor?